Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the August nineteenth, twenty twenty four Farmington School Board Meeting. Mrs. Johnston has been trying to call in as she's doing some traveling, but she's been unable to do so. If she's unable to do so, she is excused this evening, but if she's able to get through, we will have her join us at some point. At this time, I will ask that you all please rise and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any public participation at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go down to the minutes. Entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of July twenty second.
Oh, moved. Sharon is trying to call you.
Oh.
Okay.
Ooh.
All right, we're live.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. We just stood for the pledge and we're approving the minutes now.
Is she by herself?
Sharon, can you confirm that you're by yourself?
I am by myself.
Okay, and our votes tonight due to Mrs. Johnston being remote will be roll call. Okay. Motion by Mrs. Parker to adopt, I'm sorry, did you, were you specific on those minutes?
I just said, let me be specific.
Okay.
Hold on, I just got to get.
We're a little friendly, wait a minute.
They take out the shelves, it brightens the place up and we're all on lap.
Right, we don't know what to do with ourselves.
Um, oh, yeah, so you go ahead.
So I'm actually going to make a motion to approve the board minutes from July twenty second, public session, uh, non-public session. This is backwards, two and, uh, one and two.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Lozey, discussion on the minutes.
There was one thing I had a question on, hold on, pull it up, on the public minutes. I'm assuming it's just a, I, um.
What page?
Hold on, uh, hold on, I'm getting there. Um, on the third page, about two-thirds of the way down. Um, the, uh, motion to approve the pre-bidding Google form for special education services. And then, two lines down, it's a, uh, underlined sentence, but it starts, I don't know if it's supposed to start with contractor, or if there's a missing letter, I mean, a, a missing word there. And I didn't know why that was underlined, or if it was supposed to be bolded and underlined. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see it, yeah, I'm looking at it. Well, yeah, 'cause it.
I think it's because it's under new business, she's doing like A, B, C, D, so it's just a new format.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just a new format.
Oh, oh, okay.
And then the vote was right after that.
Okay, sorry, oh, you know, okay.
I saw that two earlier, but.
Okay, didn't pick up on that, thank you.
Because the other ones above two were also.
Okay, all right. Just regard that, Beth, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion on minutes? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, by roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Yeah.
Can we review the July eighth minutes that we approved, but that I think there should be an adjustment to? Um.
Oh.
So, in regards to the after-school program for the rec, the minute, the minutes state that we would need transportation between April and November, depending on the weather. I believe that should be switched to November and April.
That's right, I remember you saying that.
They would need help in the winter months especially, essentially, so we approved the minutes and we, I just don't want them to not be able to have the bus when they need it.
Okay.
So just switching the words April and November.
Is that a mo- yeah, I was gonna say, is that a motion?
Let's actually make that a motion.
I can make that motion, yep.
Motion by Mrs. Parker, do I have a second?
Yep, second.
Second by Mrs. Lozey, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye, thank you.
Yep, you, you understood that, Patty?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, by roll, these are all by roll. Okay, we're down to reports and we're starting with Valley View.
Oh, hi.
Hi.
That's like, oh, that was quick.
Hello, happy August. Um, very busy, it's been busier than anticipated, but, um, it's been good to kind of, um, create some procedures and processes in place to help staff be their best. I think the rollout and the continuation of the conversation that we're gonna have with our responsive classroom is that we as adults, um, operate best when we have clear expectations, right, and we know those processes and procedures. And we're, we're needing to provide that to students as well, so they can focus and do their best, and that was kind of in my report. So, I mean, this isn't going away, I think I use the metaphor that we're building a house which equates to an excellent education, so foundationally, it starts with, um, student behavior, so they can focus and academically be successful. Um, I think we're gonna do some more strategic planning with the leadership team, is more my vision to look at. We have that foundation and the next is coming up with a timeline of, um, folks focusing now on how are we shoring up that we're providing an excellent education, and it starts with core instruction, right? Taking a look at why are there so many interventions, ultimately, which leads back to core instruction. And so, really looking at it from each side and having some investment of how we, um, are gonna shore up the next layer of the house, which, no matter what, long-term, we have core behavior practices for our kids, core instruction, and then, you know, the rest falling into how we're providing supplemental, um, things for our students. So really working strong on those foundational pieces this year is our goal. And working with the timeline with some measurable goals, um, incremental that we can revisit during our leadership team meetings. Something that's been, you know, this is my fourth year at Valley View, and I think, um, there's always kind of been a missing piece foundationally, which looks like there's no curriculum units, and that's not to say that I know over the years, curriculum coordinators, our teachers are always working on curriculum, but I think foundationally, what is in place where we have new staff, where they're walking in and there's already an established scope and sequence for second grade, or the content, right? There's not, so, you know, I've worked in former districts where you come up with a curriculum, curriculum unit, which lays out, you know, the expectations, the essential questions, um, the student outcomes. And so I think part of our work with curriculum, um, is coming up with those foundational curriculum units, so they'll always be there, right, and so you just tweak as needed, but not much changes from that, those, you know, core instructional pieces, so that is gonna take some time, you know, a year to two. And then the assessments that align with, that makes sense for our kids, common assessments that we're using, and obviously looking at how our kids are measured, um, with standardized testing is really important to look like, yes, if the state is saying this is how our kids are showing their proficiency, are we using common assessments that prepare our kids to do well on those, right? So there has to be that inherent alignment too. We're going with a co-teaching model with SEL, so I'm really excited about that, is our unified arts team during enrichment block this year. Like I said, instead of them getting an extra art or a music, um, our kids are getting school-wide SEL lessons to address the executive functioning, to address how kids can build organizational skills. These things do not come naturally to students in today's day and age, because, you know, technology, um, is a thing. So they're not given the opportunities, so we have to give kids these skill sets, we have to give these kids skills. So the co-teaching model will, will make it as strong as possible in the delivery aspect. We're having our second round of kindergarten screenings next Tuesday, um, and potentially, right now, there's, um, about fifteen-plus kids. So quite, we're gonna have some large kindergarten classes. I was talking to some parents about how to shore up the screening process and how to involve parents more, so I got some really good feedback about next year, what that looks like, but so far, so good, the model has worked to not interrupt academics and kind of stay on our regular track schedule with kindergarten starting at the same time as the rest of the kids this year. I think, um, we would love to get another fourth kindergarten teacher. The numbers are going to be big, which means we are gonna need parent support in those classrooms, and then, of course, the kids, it's their first exposure, and it's like a gremlin, you know, it slowly, all the, all the things that need to be addressed, um, come out. So, um, it's really important to have staffing at kindergarten, first grade, too. Next week, we'll continue round two of responsive classroom, as you guys know, um, support staff is getting their own training, which is really nice, specifically to support staff. And then our regular school staff are getting back-to-back days of responsive classroom, and again, that will be a follow-up with two days throughout the year, including one where the company itself sends a, not auditor, but somebody to come observe how we are doing in our implementation and give us some feedback about what we still need to work on. Obviously, the pressing thing right now is staffing, um, in and of itself is, we still need about, um, a second grade teacher. We'd like another first and kindergarten teacher, and, uh, you'll hear about a preschool nominee tonight, which I think is, um, a temporary solution, but a great one, so very happy about that. Really excited about all the new staff we've onboarded at the staff, uh, the, the environment feels very lighthearted. So I've had a lot of comments from staff that they're really excited, um, about this year. We have a lot of extracurricular, um, activities planned for this year, which is exciting, I have to try to not do too much, that's my, um, weakness. So, um, but we are doing a literacy night in October, trunk-or-treat, veterans' assembly, the winter and spring concerts, we're, we're gonna do a STEAM night. Um, we're gonna have probably a, a tiger performance from outside actors for kids, um, amongst other things. And, um, open to feedback about how we can improve our, um, what we're doing at Valley View for our community and, um.
Can you, can you just go on mute while you're not talking, please? Thank, thank you. Sorry.
You can just mute yourself.
Bless her heart, she's on a cruise, I'm thinking, yeah, that.
If I tap the screen, then my mute button comes up.
Oh, oh, I see. Anyhow, the captain seems to be quietened now.
Oh, you're good, the only thing, um, to reiterate again, that, um, it would be amazing to get local control at our building of the website and the Facebook page, which, well, we don't have a Facebook page, so there's that. But right now, the website is, I'm gonna have to type up information, then send it to a middleman to wait from them to get back to me to put on the website, and it's just, it doesn't make sense, and then it's not timely. Right now, I'm communicating and sending things out via Dojo and then School Messenger, 'cause not all parents have Dojo, but it also should be posted on the website, because thinking parents that don't have, um, email accounts or Dojo always go to the website, like, that's what people do, they just check the website, so that's really important.
So why is it so complicated?
This is something that we, you brought up, like, you said this got on the board like two years ago, like, the website, so.
What, what's the dis-
Well, I think, when, oh, if I remember correct, yeah, I think the website had like, one person, I think historically, we've always had just one person, and I know at one point there were Facebook pages for each school, but I think when they were set up, and I don't know, Giselle might know or remember, like, I feel like when we set those up, it was on some, like, almost like a, it was on somebody's, like, through somebody's personal account, or like linked to a personal account, or something.
I was asked to make a separate pers- a separate personal account just for school. And so Henry Wilson is still active.
Right.
Under this thing, but if I left the school.
Right, and I think that's, right, and I think that's where the disconnect comes in, and I don't, I mean, I don't set Facebook pages up all the time, um, but I would assume one can be set up without a personal account.
You, I've got multiple, I have multiple pages that I'm the admin of, I don't have to set up a personal account for each one of them.
We really like it, but.
Right. And I don't know if when, and again, prior to my time, but it seems like when they were set up, they like almost were set up, they weren't set up as a page, it was like a friend, or, like, you know what I, like, it was, it was weird, and I don't, I know that.
I don't know why they can't just be set up as like a business page.
I, that's what it should be.
Like, it go into like, Henry Wilson admin versus my name attached to it, correct?
Right, and I think.
You know, so that if there's any comments that needs to be made, it wasn't me making a comment, it was Henry Wilson admin.
Going. The page.
Or Valley View admin, and that never came to fruition, I don't even.
Right, 'cause I think what we're gonna, I mean, I would assume we will just have to cancel out those pages and start fresh, which makes more sense to me, and I think, back when those pages were started, I wonder, and it, because it's been so normalized now that pages exist and businesses have their own accounts, I'm wondering if when they were set up that long ago, 'cause it was a long time ago, if that's just the way Facebook operated, and we've never changed that practice, so.
I didn't think the Henry, how old is the Henry Wilson page? Roughly.
It was before me and, um, it was only changed it over to me managing it.
Okay. And currently now, if you wanna put something on the website, explain to me again what you have to do.
Um, I can't put anything on the website.
You can't, right.
Well, our Facebook, our, our website needs an overhaul, we've been saying this, we've talked about this over and over again, it is old, it is, and, and people have tried, you know, stipends and doing their best and working multiple jobs and trying their best to update things, but it's difficult to follow, things are not updated regularly, it's.
Yeah, it's, it's, it sends a message, I agree, it sends a message to potential people again, because where do you go, you go to the website?
Right.
If you're looking at a district or looking into them, that's the first thing you see, so it sends a message if it's not updated and.
It's like not quick and easy, it's like even to, it's like you gotta go to the, you gotta go to departments.
Right, you gotta go through.
The athletic department, and then from there, you get sent to another area, and then from there, it's like you go to a calendar, but the calendar is from two thousand twenty-one, it's not your updated one that like all of us parents use, so there just needs to be some.
Has that been a topic of conversation at admin team meetings? And, uh, what's, what's.
At this point, we've done some scrubbing of the website as it currently exists. The, um, contract with the webmaster was set to expire this month, but it's been extended temporarily because we needed to get through the Power School rollover and what have you. Our, our plan is to get that addressed, um, before we get too far into the school year. Um, and in addition to that, we're looking to, um, provide ways for local control for Facebook, so each school building has its own Facebook page. Henry Wilson has theirs, but through the good graces of the current principal, um, she took the liberty to set that up on her own, um, before I arrived. And we don't want that to be a practice going forward.
I mean.
Well.
I, I don't think we need, I don't.
We have to have something in place, I mean, if I were the principal of any school here, I would want the capability to go on and make announcements and things of that nature. So we've gotta somehow make that happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that, it's frustrating, because, so I'll send it out on two.
Platforms.
And so what's one more, Facebook, and so people can access what they can access, you know, but, um.
And I think, I mean, Facebook works.
Even updating your section of the website, right? Like, under Valley View, being able to post it back.
Right. Right.
Yeah, mhm.
Yep.
Okay.
That would be helpful. Last but not least, we, um, Allison Williams moved to the high school as the high school counselor to help them out, and I think she'll bring a lot of strengths to, um, helping the post-secondary kids and, and fueling, um, fueling opportunities for them, and so with that, with some strategic moves, and then, um, true story, I saw Caitlin Walsh, Giselle's new counselor this summer, and I was like, secretly a little jealous, and I was like, oh, she's, she seems amazing. She just, you know, she had an elementary vibe, if you will. Then, um, last week, she wanted to come to the elementary school to discuss things, so we did a lateral internal, internal move, and I think, um, thank you, Giselle, I owe you. But, um, we're really excited, she's already set up, it looks very kid-friendly, and we're very excited, um, and she's already jumped right in to some parent meetings that we've had prior to school. And we have a couple new paraprofessionals moving over, because again, our needs are dire, and it's all about early prevention at our stage, so, um, so, I think that's how, I think that's about it right now.
Any questions for that?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Henry Wilson.
So to complete the Caitlin story, um, and bring up Gear Up, it kind of dovetails nicely. So, we were approached by the Gear Up program, I forwarded Jim all the information, we're gonna need an MOU signed. Gear Up is a state program, they provide, would provide us with a career and college readiness counselor. So it seemed pretty horrible if I end up with a career and college readiness counselor and two counselors, and Beth doesn't have one, and she gave up hers to the high school, it just seemed completely wrong on all fronts. Caitlin has, i- is amazing, she set up so much stuff for us this summer, um, both she and Jackson worked every Monday this summer. So we're, we're sitting in really good shape, um, so it was the right thing to do for kids. So, um, and I think she is super excited about working with littles, so, um, it was the right thing. So you don't owe me, you don't. So I know Jim has the information and he will forward it to you, um, I met his, he goes by Rue, but it's Roosevelt Harrison, Roosevelt something Harrison, um, he came in today toward the school, he is dynamic. He won't be able to do counselor things, like an ideation or things of that nature, but he would be with us forty hours a week, and the state pays for it, it is with that grade six through eight cohort. They are guaranteeing us this position for seven years, and so they will follow that cohort the whole way through. So, um, and if we qualify for it after, they would supply us with another, so this year, he would be all at Henry Wilson, next year, that position would be one-third at the high school, two-thirds at Henry Wilson, then two-thirds, then, then the whole at the high school. It's like ETS, only they accept all kids, he will meet with all kids. He'll do assemblies, parent nights, um, whatever we want him to do along career and college readiness, not just college readiness. So, um, and he can work with kids on that. The thing, the other thing that Jamie and I really loved was that these kids, anybody in that cohort of students would be eligible to apply for a scholarship, which is equal to the Pell Grant when they graduate. So, and then they follow them one year into college or career. So I hope that when you take a look at the docket sign and whatnot, that it's something that works out and, and you don't see any red flags or anything.
I have, I looked at it, it looks good, I sent it to your email for your, um, John Hancock, or thumbs up, whatever you prefer.
So that is really exciting, um, I sent a picture of that fourth grade wing, um, it looks so pretty. It's a, it's a navy blue, if you get a chance to go down, it makes the mural pop, um, and then with the lockers gone, we have these light wood cubbies, and it, it looks really pretty in that wing. So I'm really excited to invite the fourth graders in.
Awesome.
And the teachers have just been stunned, yeah, yeah. And so the custodians have been working a lot, um, the admin assistants have been great about the online registration and working out bugs and working out all, you know, additional things with Power School and trying to support Lori. So, um, Sue Spinelli, I can't say enough about her and her ability to work within a very clunky program, it's crazy. The first newsletter went out, one of the things that wasn't in it for grade seven and eight, but this is kind of things that we're working towards this year, and I'm, I'm excited about this, so we have all of our UAs this year, and the kids have to take music and they have to take gym, but we're offering them a selection on the rest. So we have six UAs, we know what the state wants, you know, they have to take that, but they could take an art or a music, they don't have to take both when they're in seventh and eighth, so we're really excited that they can kind of have some voice and choice for a change, um, and like STEAM and, um, foreign language, so they'll be able to pick, and we're doing those as semester-based with either the art or, um, either the health or the gym. So, and we're hoping that by making them semester-based, um, that the music teacher can really do a nice job with a a winter show and a spring show, so. We've reached out to Rochester Center for the Core Arts to see if we could get some help, because we'd really like to do a play this year, 'cause it's been a number of years. Carolyn Jones came back to visit, and I think she's the last person to put on a play. So I know nobody feels confident doing that, but if we could get some help, and there is money in, in the Student Activities Drama Fund, so, um, we'd like to make that happen this year.
And I have contacts there now, so.
Yeah.
I'll be reaching out and seeing what we can do.
Do you have any questions? It's been pretty, it's been a quiet month, I mean, we've been working hard, but it's been a pretty quiet month.
Don't say that too loudly. Don't say that too loudly.
Any questions?
Giselle, when will they be picking out their classes?
The first day, the first two days, so, um, when they go to UA the first day, um, Mr. Bickford and Ms. Rhonda will support, because since those are things they don't have a choice on.
Right.
Then they'll do a rotation through the others where they talk about, um, what their class would look like. So they'll pick it the first day, and we're hoping to get them scheduled that afternoon or early the next morning.
Scaring them up for high school, another step.
Yeah, and I just think, wouldn't it be great to have those kinds of choices?
I think it's great.
In middle school, um, we will have a pre-algebra class this year for grade seven. We do have a number of students who fit the profile, um, so we're really excited about that, and we're hoping that maybe next year they would be able to come as eighth graders, come to the high school like our kids did last year, so just some exciting things for kids to be excited about.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Caro's not here, but we didn't have a report, hi.
I, I asked him to come and speak to the after-school program, because, um, we've had some pretty positive developments in addition to Parks and Rec, and I'd ask him to speak to the details, so that you have an understanding as well.
Yeah, I had a report, um, organized, but I'm not really on.
Yeah, I had a report organized, but I'm not really on the agenda for the curriculum report. So we'll postpone that till next time.
That's fine.
So I, what I really wanted to go over with is some of the specifics that we've been working out in terms of an after-school enrichment program. And the target is really to give every child an opportunity to have an after-school program where not only can they have some outside time, recess, but also have support for anything they're learning in the classroom or in their courses, and then some sort of enrichment activity. So we came up with a name called Tiger Beats. I don't know if you have a copy of it, but it's an acronym for Bridging Gaps, Enrichment Activities, Academic Planning, Timely Teaching, and Success for All. So we kind of went with that theme. We have the hours of operation, and it will be running, whoop, yeah. It should say, I'm sorry, three o'clock to five o'clock. I had to change that. It says 3:30. That's not correct. So right after school, and we worked with transportation on a couple things. So the rec center, as you know, is overbooked. They have 29 students on their waitlist, just mostly K through three and a couple fourth, fourth and fifth. And so they were trying to solve the problem through transportation. This program right here is going to really take the heat off that rec program and put it under our own jurisdiction. But at the same time, see them as a collaborative resource. So I met with the Ericas today, and what, what we're thinking is, number one, they expressed that grades six through eight really have no, no place to go in terms of if they're not involved in sports, then they kind of lag, go home. They're old enough to go home, and we might find them, you know, gaming or just wandering, and maybe there's no structured activity. And so we really wanted to help that specific group have some independence, but yet be in an enrichment program. So one of the things that they suggested was if we had a bus, we would take our normally-registered K3 that they have on their list, I think there's 23, and grade six through eight down to the rec. And grade six through eight would come from our school, and this is all funded through Title I, with a support person. The reason again is, six through eight is a critical development area in terms of you want independence, but you need social opportunities. You need to develop that sense of agency, whether it's academic or social or this idea of who am, who am I as a person and as a student? And so as they go to the rec, they're leaving campus, which, okay, that's a little bit of independence, but they're also getting a support person to go with them so that it stays connected to us and our program in the academic piece. Other than that, the program is really a traditional program. K through three will be housed at Valley View. Four and five will be at the middle school, and high school is going to be doing its own program up there. So there's, there's technically four locations if you consider the rec. Each staffing for this position will have a coordinator at each building level and a support person. At the rec, they said they only need a support person. They don't need a coordinator. And they can, the staffing person can work with me too if they need to, and we can put things together. So I can serve sort of as that coordinator if they need me. The schedule, again, is typical of any after-school program. You have your dismissal, where they would be out on the playground with the support staff. Then at three o'clock, come back in, snack. We're working into the reimbursement on that snack. The federal program has a after-school reimbursement program. Then they would be doing their homework or their intervention. You know, that could be flashcard. It could be math games. It could be anything that has, if they say, well, I don't have any homework, or there was no report from the teacher that they're missing assignments, then the coordinator is responsible for coming up with academically appropriate activities that they can do. And then from four to five would be an enrichment activity. And there is money put aside in the budget for those activities. So Title IV and Title I are both involved with enrichment. So in terms of what that includes, depends on two things. Number one, what is the expertise of the coordinator? What programs are they able to put together? And number two, what resources might we have in the community that would be willing, even with a small amount of pay or maybe no pay, to come into the building and teach fiber arts? So crocheting, or knitting, or sewing, for STEAM activities? Music theater, which was mentioned, that you want to get the theater program going. We talked about dance today, too. Carol Lee, used to be Matthews, but not Matthews anymore. Is that, okay. And she lives in the community. So having that program serve at the end for a place where kids can learn about something interesting that's interesting to them, but also serve, again, in that social role of helping our kids talk to each other across the table instead of scrolling to each other across the table, right? And there's that, that quote when two people are on the phone, you have a million people in your hand, but you're not interacting with the single person next to you. So helping to do that. I put together a little bit of a timeline because we are on a crunch. So the grant is written. It's, it's ready to be submitted. I've met with the rec a couple times to iron out the six through eight prospects. We, we need to put together, and I, I did put together a soft description of what the coordinator would do and the support staff. And then we need to, as you can see from the list, put out the paperwork, get registrations done, which that would be the coordinator who would be in charge of those, reviewing the registrations, rostering. And if we were lucky, we could have a soft start date of September 9th. Except for the high school is ready to go. We, Allison, who went up to the high school as the school counselor, she would love to do the after-school program. She would serve as not only like an enrichment, helping kids with ed mentum. We still have kids who need to finish up by the 15th to regain credits. So we have that piece. And then also serving to, there's a couple people who are interested in offering high school students health and well-being. We have the new Gronk Gym coming, I guess. So how can we utilize that for some after-school programming? So she's kind of, she's, she's really moving on that, and she'll be there four days a week. And also if students have detention, they will also be with her. So she's serving two, two purposes in a way. So that, that's what we've put together. Questions?
I think it's wonderful.
Personally, you're gonna be very thankful for this.
Yeah, Erica was.
Well, I love that there's like a structure to it, too, right? It's not just like a babysitting program, right? Like it's going to serve a purpose, and there's meaning behind it.
Absolutely.
It's, it's wonderful. And I think once word gets out there, too, I think you'll have a lot of community members and businesses that would be willing to volunteer and come in, and, you know, they can set up a week-long, whether it's a cooking class or crocheting, or, you know.
And again, we put money aside if we had to give them a small pay.
Yeah.
But also we put aside money for supplies.
Yeah.
So, you know, whatever it is, if that person's like, I'm willing to come in, but could you guys pick up the supplies? So we can do that. And some schools are gonna need more supplies than others. I did book it by school, however, I, I don't know what supplies. The high school's probably not gonna need that many supplies for what they do. But the younger ones, the littles, might. So, yeah, I hope that takes some of the stress off. They said their phones been ringing constantly. We've got all these children that just are, are looking for a space to go. And if they can just hold on for a little bit until we send the grant in, get the approval, and then put out the word, which right now, I guess I'm putting out the word a little bit, that we're gonna need coordinators and support staff.
In essence, we just wanted to make certain that it was clear to all of you that there's a distinction between what's being offered. So essentially, the Parks and Rec's traditional program versus Tiger Beat, which has got an academic thrust to it.
And I, I think I forgot to mention, too, that we have grant, the funding for the, a late bus at five o'clock is in this grant. So that is funded for. And it can pick up at the three stops and bring kids where they need to go.
Okay, I have some questions.
Oh, great.
And you may have said this, and I may have just missed it here. How many support staff positions?
So here's the wish list. K through three wishes for two, and four and five wish for two support staffs. So one coordinator.
Yep.
They're really in charge of making sure the ship runs well.
Right.
And then ideally, we would like with the, with the younger group, two support staff to be there. That way, if the kids want to break up into two groups, it might not be as stressful for offering two activities for some diversity. It, it might be helpful. And then for the six through eight, it's just one, and for high school, there's none.
This is a question from Mackenzie. If a current person on the paraprofessional staff decides they want to put in for a support staff position, how does that affect overtime and things of that nature?
So we did a little research. So if they're currently on payroll, it's, it's still a separate job code. So it's not an overtime thing, but it is a New Hampshire retirement thing. We would take our retirement and go towards the retirement plan. We called New Hampshire Retirement, and they confirmed that that's okay. However, if we're employing part-time members from the community that are not currently part of the staff, it's a non-retirement item. So we don't contribute towards that. So it's a little bit less expensive to go outside of the current staff just not contributing towards the retirement. However, either way, it's still a benefit to whoever signs it.
Explain to me what you mean by a different job code.
So like, overtime is typically for the same job. If you, if you're a teacher during the day and you're performing contractual duties, and then you're the same type of teacher at night, maybe teacher's a bad example. So you're an hourly para, and then you, instead of a para during the day, you're a, I'm not sure what we're calling them.
Tiger Beat Support Staff.
They're just support staff. Right now, they're just called support staff.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of like getting a second job.
The same employer, though.
But it comes out of two different items.
I get that.
Okay.
But we've been down this road before, so please, please make sure.
Got it.
Because I really, yeah, I really would. And I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench in.
No, monkey wrenches are always good.
I'm trying to foresee potential obstacles before we get there. Because, for example, we've had pares in the past who had bus licenses, and that all had to end. And those are two different jobs.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, it was same employer. And, and pares come to mind because they would be fantastic individuals to do this, right? But we've got to make sure, and it's just something to.
Does it matter that it's federal funds versus local funds? That's, I guess, what Mac and I are thinking.
You can check.
Not from that standpoint, but we're gonna have to go follow up.
Okay, well, we'll clarify and be certain.
That's definitely different from the scenario that presented itself before. So maybe, you know, but I just want you to check into it.
So, yeah, I do, I think that would be something definitely to look into, Mac, because I recall when I worked in Middleton, we had grant-funded positions like this that we did, and we signed up for six to eight-week increments. And so I know that I didn't get New Hampshire Retirement taken out of that. Like I got that grant-funded pay.
Yes.
And so it was different. So that might just be something that you want.
That's kind of funky, because when, when we were talking to NHRS, it was, if they do this one job during the day, and then they come back at night to do the same job, would that make that para eligible then for retirement if they're working over 35 hours a week? So I didn't phrase it to them like that. It was more of like the salary position.
Right, just make sure they know, because I'm not sure that you would have to put in because it is a grant-funded, it's, it's something completely separate and it's grant-funded. So just.
We'll clarify for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll revisit it.
And maybe things have changed. I mean, it's been a few years, so.
Well, I'd rather just have it be done right.
Right. My, my second, my second question is, the fall is the busiest athletic season. And so I guess I'm wondering, have we connected with Gil, and not just Gil, Gil and Kevin, because Kevin has a real true sort of read on how busy transportation may be on any particular day for athletics? And would we have someone to do a five o'clock late run? Because there are days where you could have a golf meet, a volleyball game on the road, and a soccer game on the road. Or a volleyball and middle school and high school. So we, we gotta, I like the, this great idea, right? The five o'clock busing, but I want to make sure that we've got it.
Yep, so I met with Gil.
Yeah.
And he said he did.
Yeah.
So, but let's double check.
I don't know if he has, does he have his junior high schedules yet?
All he said to me was, yes, I have a driver for you and a bus at five o'clock.
Okay.
So, but then again, let's double, triple check.
Well, we've got more drivers than we did last year. We're in a much better place. So I, I can believe that. I just want, again, I'm trying to foresee obstacles.
We met with him twice.
Okay, okay.
And just going back, just a quick look at New Hampshire overtime laws. I'm thinking you're right, you know. I think that, that you're correct in the way that you stated it. I think it is for the same employer.
But even with federal funding?
That's the only caveat that I have.
That's, that's, that could be, I would check into that.
We'll research and provide you with a written update answering your questions.
Thank you.
ASAP.
Do we need to approve this?
Sorry.
Do we need to officially approve this, or?
We can, we can do it.
I would suggest that you do, given that you initially approved the Parks and Rec program.
Well, it's a program and it's.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to, to.
I'll make a motion to go forward with the Tiger Beats After-School Enrichment Program as presented tonight, obviously with our follow-up questions, but.
Motion by Mrs. Lozey.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Parker. Any further discussion?
The only suggestion I would make is perhaps inserting the word companion into the title of the program, because it is a companion to the Parks and Rec program unless you think that's reading too far into things. Because the initial concern at the outset was that there was some distinguishing factor between what we're offering. And that concern only came from the Parks and Rec side, which I think has been adequately answered. If you don't think companion is necessary, that's fine, too.
I don't know. I mean, I think it's pretty well laid out. And if I'm gonna sign my child up for this Tiger Beats, I'm gonna look at the description. And I'm gonna know that it's very different than what the Park and Rec is offering. I mean, because this information will be provided, right?
Absolutely.
So.
On our new webpage.
And we talked about it here, too. So, I mean, I don't feel like it has to, but that's just my personal.
Oh, no, I agree.
That's my personal opinion, but.
Yeah, we will, we will make it clear.
Yeah.
But it is, I do want to also recognize the Ericas and the collaborative work they put in.
Oh, of course, yes.
Their desire to really help the community.
Yes.
Really came through. I mean, they met with me today, and they just finished their heyday weekend, so.
Yeah.
Their, their, their passion is really into making sure those kids have a place to go. So it's been really fun working with them. All right, well, great.
We have to vote.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I just want to let you know, the reason why I've been on my phone is because Sharon's been trying to text and call in. Every time we try to connect through Facebook, Facebook video, it's not, so.
Tell us she's excused.
So I told her, don't stress. She's excused. Go enjoy your cruise.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Unfinished business, review and approval of the Farmington High School Student Handbook.
For the benefit of the board, in the last hour, I was supplied with an update to the high school section. I can't speak to any specifics that would distinguish the before and after, with the exception of dates that come to mind. It will slightly impact the table of contents, but I'll take your direction as to what you'd like to do. Substantively, a majority of this document is ready. It was initially ready, which is why I had it scheduled for the agenda tonight. But I wanted you to be aware that this change had just occurred.
Do we have a copy of what they've changed, or?
I can. I can, if you'd just give me a moment.
And I'm just concerned, too, especially with the truancy policies that we met at length with. A lot of work and effort was put into that last week with administration and community input and the school resource officers, admin assistants. So I just want to make sure that there's a discussion about that, because that is absolutely going to need to go into the handbooks as well as the new...
Agreed.
Policies that we, and guidelines for keeping and sending those students home.
And Katrina, with all due respect, is, is working diligently, and I believe that's still a work in progress with her.
I'm going to make a motion to table this until later in the meeting.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right. SAU sixty-one, Support Student Success Plan.
In your board folder, there's a copy of the latest rendition of the Student Success Plan. It's, it's basically to keep in front and center of the question that you had put before us at this time last year, which was to make sure that we had a, a means of student management across the district. You've heard it incrementally through the principals' reports in terms of items such as responsive classroom. So those details you would find at the building level. This is more of a globalized rendition of what we're doing to promote student success across the board. Not necessarily looking for approval tonight, but wanted you to be aware that this is a work in progress and that we've made some substantive progress since the last time I mentioned it.
Okay. Onboarding Toolkit.
This is also for the board's awareness. We've developed, it's basically a system to support new staff coming on board so that we're not just welcoming them as part of the opening of school and not seeing them substantively again and not... And I don't mean any disrespect to the building-level principals, because I know they're doing their due diligence. But just generally speaking, I think it's important that the, the SAU continue to support staff as a group going across the school year. So we have defined dates, and their dates essentially meant as a week, because this isn't to pull people out of their workday, but to set up times during that week to meet with them to essentially make sure that they're still enjoying the level of comfort and security that we promised at the outset to address any questions or concerns that they might have, so that when we get to the end of the school year, you have a sta, a new staff that now has a year under their belt and feels support above and beyond the call and, and looking to return for the coming school year. And the onboarding plan speaks to that. There is a sample survey page, I believe it's at the end of the doc, that just asks some basic questions that if we can glean that information in advance of meeting with them, we'll be able to speak in a more meaningful way as to what their concerns are. So again, this isn't something I'm necessarily in need of approval at this point. I just wanted you to be aware that, that this exists and what we're trying to do.
Okay. Jess, you would ask to have this put on an audit update?
Yes, thank you. Just hoping to find out where we're at today, because we're fast approaching September first.
Before Mac speaks to any details that he might have, please know that I've reached out to Mr. Colby on two occasions. He's very timely in, in getting back, but his communication of late is he's still waiting to hear from the audit firm. And he, he can't do anything further until he hears back from them.
Okay.
So the ball is in their court.
Do we know for what or how many items, or do we know anything about what he's waiting for?
The last was of the original thirteen, it was boiled down to two or three. And before he could act on any of those two or three, he needed feedback from the auditing firm before he could move forward.
And I feel like that's the update we got last time.
It is.
It is verbatim.
It is. We haven't reached out since this has, this really started and Greg took over, so Jim's been managing the relationship. I'd ask them kind of every week to reach out, and then he reaches out to Greg, and then Greg says the same thing.
Greg says the same thing?
That he's waiting for the auditor.
And have we reached out to the auditors?
I have not. I could.
I think we need, need to get on...
Aggressive, aggressive, aggressive.
Yeah, I agree.
I think that's the term I used before we went into the summer, that we need to be aggressive on this. So if we need to bug the auditing firm who works for us, too, then we bug them.
I agree.
Yeah, and I, right, and...
We have a deadline, it's August nineteenth.
We'll do that. I, for the benefit of everyone at home, it's, it's my humble opinion that Mr. Colby is working in good faith and is, is not stalling in any way, shape, or form.
I just note from my little experience of helping that they have been very responsive, the auditors have. So if I may, can I ask to be on that email?
Absolutely, yeah.
If I can be a part of the communication.
Put us all on it.
Oh, sure.
I mean, that's, I like to...
Yeah, just so we have something for budget coming up.
Next week.
Yeah.
We'll do.
And they are going to need that.
The, are we, do we anticipate having to, because nine-one is the due date for the MS twenty-five correctly, correct?
Yeah.
Do we, oh, in the past, we've filed extensions, but where are we at? We're going to...
Well, I really don't want to turn in another form that could, you know, that could have more changes coming and then go back to the state and say, you know, that we have to change it again. I can go ahead and file the extension now, and that takes us through September.
Well, I'm just saying, do you need to?
Right.
If, I mean, if they were to respond to me today, I mean, I've done some work on our DOE twenty-five, but those will change those opening balances, so that's... I'm afraid to get too far into the, some of the weeds of it and then having to start over with new balances.
I mean, I'd, I'd file the extension just where we have a lot of balls in the air with the audit coming up, you know?
Yeah.
We have a lot of, and just the start of school is always a crazy time, and then...
And I've been trying not to be too naggy with the auditor, per se. I know the idea is to be aggressive. I, I got aggressive with them once, and they were, you know, they pushed back a little bit. So I was just trying to let them work it out with Greg and see what came of it. Obviously, that strategy hasn't looked the best, so, yeah, we'll, we'll send the email and get everybody back in the loop.
Great.
How many hours Greg putting in a week?
It's not, it's not a week. He comes in and puts in a full day. I think he's been with us on at least three occasions so far.
He took some work home. He hasn't billed us for it, any of it, yet. Based upon what Jim is saying, he's not working right now until he hears from the auditor, so. I don't know.
This is worrying me. This is starting to worry me. I mean, going into this, I didn't anticipate that Greg was going to be his own little island. I anticipated that he was going to be supporting your work as well. So it sounds different to me. I don't know how it got different, but I'm almost wondering if it's time for the board chair to send an email out and say, hey, what's going on?
So, is he working, I, I guess I, I don't remember. Is Greg coming to us from the auditing firm?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I...
Well, not from them, as a referral.
He has to be an independent party.
Right, but that's who, so it's...
That's who they recommend him?
Right. I just wanted to make sure, like, that's, they, if they're recommending him, they've...
I originally told Jim, too, another option was, you know, to hammer it out between me and my mentor and come in on the weekends and work until it's done. We didn't take that route, which is okay. And then, like I said the last time, I, I, I'm trying, I'm trying to be very respectful of the auditor's time. It's a complex case, and that's not something I can overstate. And there's a difference of opinion on how we got to where we are. But, you know, I'm really trying to work with them, not against them.
When we had our meeting with them, I found that to be the most helpful, because the questions were asked live and we could look at each other, we could talk to each other, and it was just so helpful to not wait two weeks or a month for a meeting. So perhaps, not for a meeting, for an update. I don't know if it's appropriate for us to have another Zoom call. That's the one, you couldn't make it, so I hopped in for you.
I, I, yeah, and quite frankly, I, I, it's unlikely that I could make it now. I don't know, your situation changed, too, so are you able to do one?
I would be less flexible, but I could make it, I could, I could make it work.
Yeah, maybe it's...
Because it's pretty important. But I think that that's the best, that was the best step for me to understand what was happening, and now I feel like I don't at all anymore.
Would you mind leading that charge?
I can do that.
Thank you. School Safety Plan.
The document that's in the folder is the result of a year's collaboration between the school district and our local emergency responders. It meets the criteria for homeland security that we're planning to file this document with. There is a flipbook that is currently out to the printers that is building-specific in the sense of a cover page and floor plans, but the flipbook content response comes from the document that you've got in front of you. It's essentially so that in the event of, of an issue, the school can respond in a well-coordinated fashion so that emergency responders can, can come on site and manage the situation at hand. So I, I wanted you to be aware that this exists. I don't know if you've had a chance to review it. If you haven't, that's fine, and at some point, I think school board approval would be in order. But this is, this is a plan based on, for the folks at home, emergency responders are trained in what's called the Incident Command System. If you want to find out more about it, just look up National Emergency Management System, NIMS, and that's where the substance of this document comes from. It's important in a, in an emergency situation that everybody's essentially speaking the same language. The idea is not to put the entire document in the hands of our teaching staff, and it's not that we're trying to hide things from everyone, but think of it this way. God forbid you're in the midst of a, of a rollover in your car. The last thing you're going to do is reach for your owner's manual, turn to page four ninety-five where it says, make sure you're wearing your seatbelt. The flipbook idea essentially is to take that page from the end of that manual and put it in a, an easy-to-access flipbook form so that folks know how to respond in the event of an emergency. There will be emergency training provided by our SROs as part of opening week, the craze training, so our staff can expect that. And then the idea essentially is to be working in your buildings, in your classrooms, around school safety, and what's appropriate given the circumstances at hand.
Have, I'm sorry, have the SROs in chief Orlando been part of the development of this?
Oh, yes, from the beginning.
Okay. So go ahead.
Just as we're also at the same time trying to roll out TASTA, will that be incorporated into this document or be a separate document, or...
We can incorporate it at some point.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to get some more details about that.
Yeah.
Because of my understanding, TASTA is a, a tool essentially for communications and management in the event of an emergency. So I can see where it has a place, but I didn't want to be arbitrarily, and I don't think you're expecting that I would do something like that. But at some point, yeah, we can look at folding it into this. And just for the benefit of the board, and forgive me if this sounds like I'm touting my own horn, but I'm not. This is a plan that I originally worked on back in the nineties. And the model that's being put forth at, at our return to school is a model that the state had since adopted and is used in schools across the state. So this isn't something that's unique to us, but I, I think overall, it's, it's good to be part of that family.
Okay, thank you. When, when would you be looking for the approval by?
At the next board meeting at the earliest, if that's okay with you all.
Okay.
I just want to be really, really mindful of what we're putting out there to the public and for public access and what we're sharing in the public session of the board meetings when it comes around school safety and managing these situations at school, because I'm a firm believer that it should be only a very select few who knows what's going on in an emergency situation in order to keep our students and staff safe, so I just need that to be said. I've said it before and I'll continue to say it.
Thank you.
RFP Contract Review. Now, I noticed, I guess I didn't notice this when I approved the agenda. There's one under unfinished business and one under new business.
I just noticed that when I, when I picked up the agenda, and I'm sorry, I...
You're not talking about two separate...
It's not two separate things. It's one thing, and I wish I had caught it when Katrina said it the other day.
And I didn't catch that, so I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Colleen.
All right. So I do have some proposals to share with you. But before I share those with you, I just had a few words I wanted to say about contracting, contracting process, contracting need. And I wanted to start by thanking Lisa Abbott, where's the camera? So Lisa, wherever you are, okay, whichever one it is. And I, I appreciate you coming last week and sharing concerns as the union president for the paraprofessionals in the district. I listened carefully, actually a few times, to, to what you shared. And I, and I do think that, that Lisa, you raised good points, you know, from the union perspective. I think good thoughts were raised, and I would be really happy to be part of any kind of, you know, sub-contingency group to develop solutions for the district collaboratively around ensuring that we have the para educators to provide service for the students and that everyone's needs are met from the students' side, from the union member's side. I will say, you know, districts across our state use this strategy. There's very few that don't use this strategy of contracting. And somehow, they, they've figured out how to work this out with, and they have unions in their districts, too. So I believe that, you know, we can figure that out, too. I'm, I'm certain...
I will, I could add something. Since our last meeting, I have also been reached out to by Brian Shagnon, the president of the Teachers Union, asking to meet with members of our board and members of his executive board to discuss ideas that they have
Great.
for staffing. Because they're initially have expressed that they are against the idea of, of contracting. Any, any position out that may fall under the master agreement, that would fall under their collective bargaining agreement, a similar position.
Yeah.
So I've told him that we will set that up.
That's great. And I think, you know, there's got to be great ideas and great ways of going about this that, that support everybody in the ways that they need to be supported in the district.
Yeah. If, if I may, get on a small soapbox for a moment, and this is just me. This, I'm not speaking on behalf of my board, but every decision I ever made as an administrator here in this district, and every decision that I continue to make as a board chair, I always have the collective bargaining agreements in mind, always. However, when it comes down to collective bargaining agreements or the services for a child, that will always come first with me. Services for children will always be more important to me than anything else. All right, I want to put that out there so that you know what you're dealing with. That doesn't mean that I am willing to violate master agreements, but it means for me personally, I have to, I have to... I have to, I have to listen to all of these different ideas and solutions, because we have children who may not receiving the quality of service that we need them to receive. So it trumps hurt feelings for me-
Mm-hmm.
...and other things. And I'm sorry if that's blunt and sort of, mm, but that's me. So, um, anyway, go ahead.
Well, and I think that what you bring up is, you know, where I, I would summarize, but I have other things to say, but I'll go to where the summary is and kind of come back, is that it's a, it's a dilemma for the district, right? So dilemma, right, is this problem that you have to solve where it seems like there's no good solution. The thing is, I have to believe that with all the creative minds that we have here and all of the caring that we have for our community, for our children, for our parents, for our staff members, for each other, that we can find a win-win. It doesn't have to be win-lose or lose-lose. I, I, I just really do believe we can, um, figure out this, what appears to be dilemma right now. But what, um, some other things that I wanted to make sure to say is, okay, so we have districts across the state that are doing this, you know, maybe we can look at, you know, how that's happening, um, and how that works well with unions. Um, I'm certain that if you were to approve any contracted services tonight, that, um, given the level of professionalism that I see in our staff and our faculty, that everyone will work professionally and collaboratively together, I'm positive of that. Um, I know that we are all here to provide for our community, from the children in our community, to do our community, to our community staff and faculty, and I think that we must be able to find an answer to do our best to support everyone, and I look forward to helping find that way. Um, I want to make it clear that as a leader, personally, my philosophy is to employ people, um, to the school, and, and I think that I share that philosophy with the other leaders here in the room, that we all want to have our own employees of Farmington School District, that that's what we want most, and there are so many good reasons for that. Um, my proposal is to use contractors only for emergent positions until we're able to fill those ourselves. And so what typically happens with the contracts is that you have a 30-day out clause, which is just the right amount of time. You've found somebody, they got to get their fingerprints and do their paperwork and come in, you have a transition period, and they're in and the other one's out. Um, so completely intend to, um, if it is approved, to move forward in that way. Um, another idea that's out there that could be considered and discussed at some point, it would be employing any contractor, um, after we've had an opportunity to try them with the direct hire fee. Now, you may ask, why would somebody want to do that? Well, in talking with these contracting companies, um, it may be that the individuals that are sent here from a contracting company may actually prefer to work for us, given that the benefits that we offer typically exceed what's offered from a contracting company, and I think, hope, maybe Matt can talk about that in a few minutes. Um, one second. All right, so open positions. Here's what we have open, and then I'll tell you what is emergent or kind of like a grave need, um, meaning we're, we're in real trouble if we don't address it. So I am happy to tell you that, um, for special education teachers and case managers, we have no grave need. We're not fall, but we are in a really good place, and here's why. We were able to hire a few folks who, um, are working on getting their statements of eligibility, okay? And, um, I'm working with them through that process, and they're going to be able to start, um, at the beginning of school with their statements of eligibility. So you've already approved them, it's just the hiccups of getting that statement, but we're just about there. So, that's great news. So we've got, uh, five out of six at Valley View, but you will see a, um, pre-K teacher tonight, um, on your approval list, and if you approve that person, then they're all set. Henry Wilson will have four out of five, and guess what, Farmington High School will have four out of four.
Awesome.
For the special ed teachers. Yeah, yeah, so really great news. Um, as far as school counselors go, um, district-wide, we have three out of five. Um, with what Giselle is cooking up, um, really that continues to put the more grave, dire, urgent need for that second, um, school counselor here at the high school, so one. So looking for one school counselor to contract with one. Um-
And I think it's important to point out, if I may-
Mm-hmm.
-that guidance services last year at Farmington High School were provided by a contracted service.
Right.
So this is, I mean, not, not through an agency, but it was a contracted service-
Oh, I was just saying, okay.
...that the district paid for.
Mm-hmm.
So-
Yeah.
-that's important for folks to understand that that has happened.
Right, right. Um, as far as, um, para educators go for open positions, um, at Valley View, we have 20 out of 23. Yes, it's a lot of para educators. There's where there's a lot of need, and it's also where a lot of work is done to no longer need para educator support, right?
So what was Valley View's number, sorry?
Twenty out of 23. At Henry Wilson, we have seven out of 10. At the high school, we have, guess what, six out of six.
Wow.
High school's coming around. Yeah, as far as staffing, that's really good. So, um, in the analysis of the students' needs for the para educator support, whether we're talking individual support or shared para educator support, the grave emergent, dire need is for two at Valley View. So the place that we're at now for employment would be looking for two contracted para educators and one contracted school counselor for only as long as we need that person, and then there's the 30-day out clause, right? Okay. You also need to know what the current barriers are to, um, employing people, because, um, we all have been doing a lot of interviewing, um, and reaching out and recruiting and et cetera. Um, so, uh, Beth and I, I just, I was just thinking, we met with a wonderful gentleman last week who was interested in being a para educator at, um, at Valley View, and, um, it is clear to me that his email to us right after the interview that he wasn't going to continue forward was because of the wages. And so, you know, I mean, the way that the CBA had been sent to him, so he could review that, uh, during his interview, he just wanted to make sure that that was, it, what it was going to be. But he's just a picture of what we are encountering. So you have the base wage coming in, um, as a huge barrier. Um, we have critical shortages. Now, critical shortages have been around forever, and special ed teacher has always been on the list. Well, I think, I don't know why para educator isn't on the list, but it should be. Um, school counselor is, is another critical shortage. Um, and then finally, I just want to reiterate that credentialing is a huge barrier for people. So first you have the costs of credentialing. So if you want to be a para educator, and you know we have to have people licensed as para educator too, for, for Valley View and the high school, because we're Title I school, it is $311. And I, some board meeting, back, in your folder there somewhere, you have that explanation, okay? Of how that breaks out and why it's $311 out of pocket. They have to pay before they even start work, because they've got to have that, right? To come into work. Um, if you want to be a special education teacher, eh, the only way you can get that is a statement of eligibility. You cannot get an emergency authorization for anything special education, only statement of eligibility. So then you have to do everything that it asks you to do, and it's going to cost you around $425. That includes the application, it includes, um, the Praxis Core, that includes, uh, getting your fingerprints sent to the state, paying the state for their software to read that, it's like $425, just to get a piece of paper to say, okay, you can hire me now. And then we have to go through, given the licensing plan, so, so there's the cost, but then there's also navigating the process. So I have happily helped quite a few people navigate the process of just getting their statement of eligibility.
It is not easy.
It is not easy. Um-
So thank you.
I, I, I'm so happy to do it. I, I really, I love building educators, I really do. And I love helping people that want to do this. You want to do it, let me see what I can do to help you through the process. Um, but it, it, it is difficult. Um, over the years, uh, there are more and more steps to licensing. Um, the process itself is difficult to navigate, the demands and requirements have increased as well, as they should. I mean, we should be stringent, you know, on our teachers, and especially those working with our most disabled kids, but this has impacted how quickly we can get people, or if we can get people, sometimes they, you know, just give up during the process. So, um, I just wanted to bring up those, um, items that I've noticed that have been barriers to moving forward. Uh, I also wanted to outline the impact, um, of not contracting. That comes to mind. Um, so one impact that, that perhaps we haven't discussed is the additional workload that that will place on, on current staff, including, um, perhaps even reassignments that, um, people, uh, hadn't really imagined they, uh, would be doing, um, which then may impact morale and may impact, uh, retention of our, of the staff that we have. Um, we have talked about our inability to implement IEPs, the potential for legal ramifications, but I want to be clear what more there is after that. So we've talked a little bit about, once you, you know, get into these legal ramifications of not implementing, um, special education plans. Those legal ramifications then trickle into our district data dashboard, okay? And our district data determination. Which then, if you have a different determination, may put our grant funding at risk, our IDA grant funding at risk. So legal ramifications, you know that goes with money, IDEA ramifications, that goes with money. And other implications, if we cannot provide for kids here, we will have to be looking at out-of-district placement to provide for their needs. So if I have students that require individualized support, one-to-one service, we may need to be looking elsewhere. Um, remember, the costs associated with out-of-district placement are not only the tuition, but also the related services, so speech, OT, PT, and transportation. That is a huge one. Another impact is on our community itself. The fact is that the students and the parents that I have been working with over the past year want their children here. They love Farmington, they love Farmington schools, and guess what? We want their children here too. So I just feel like this is, this also sets a stage for conflict in community relations as well. So that is another impact that came to mind for me. There's, I'm sure, more. So we come to the dilemma that, um, that Joel and I posed, um, you know, how do we, instead of being lose-lose, win-lose, lose-win, do, you know, win-win, how do we do this for everyone in our community? Before I bring the proposals forward, uh, for your review, um, I asked Beth and Giselle to stay, because I just really wanted them to have a chance to weigh in on, um, their thoughts about the importance in, uh, contracting.
I'm just scared that, I have one para professional per grade level now. It, it just scares me. I, I, I think we have really good paras, and I think they're going to work their butts off, and I think we have really good case managers, and, um, we're going to have a split between a grade level where they have to cover two, which we did last year, but I'm not sure we're going to meet the needs of the, of the kids, and that scares me, so.
I think that was very well set, very succinct, Colleen, very well thought out. You and I have always been on the same page. We have an obligation to these kids, they're our clients, it's our job. It reflects poorly on everyone who's working their butts off to go above and beyond, when it takes one, one complaint, one, one case, one liability where we're not conceding to doing what we need to be doing, and those obligations to reflect poorly on our district of all the hard work that we've been doing day in and day out for years, as well as the board. And it only takes one that gives us and tarnishes Farmington's name. And then, again, I always go back to, how are we going to attract future educators and leaders for the sustainability piece? And if you look up any Google and find that there are arbitrary cases out there, then that's a black mark of who wants to work for that district when they don't have their eyes dotted and their teeth crossed, if you will. For me, we have a due diligence, I agree with Joel, um, we have to put the kids first at this point. And it's a temporary Band-Aid, um, but it is a Band-Aid to support our kids, and, um, I support it. Um, obviously, long-term, again, just like we're in the teaching crisis, we're in a para professional crisis as well, and hopefully the town will be open and willing to help us problem-solve long-term, um, the pay that is comparable to surrounding districts, because we're losing that, we're losing pairs to surrounding districts with the same demographics as Farmington, um, and we have to do something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we, um, we had, uh, three companies that submitted proposals, and I'll just hand you some packets.
And I just have to say too, like, this isn't a lack of any ones, of anyone not trying, I mean, this, this has been an issue for a couple of years now, actually, really, since COVID, um, district-wide, statewide, across the entire country, our entire nation, so-
And not just teaching.
And not, right, correct, not just teaching, it's law enforcement, it's medical field, right? It's everywhere. And I know personally, because I have been emailed, I have been called, uh, by administration and by members at the SAU, so, you know, we are all doing our very best to hire the very best, and unfortunately, when there's a lack of applicants out there, no matter how hard we try, we have to look at other measures, because at this point, you are talking special education, you are talking about major, major legal ramifications, more than just a master agreement or a CBA.
I'm wondering where we're going with this. Uh, oh, this is new water to me, because usually when we make decisions about hiring and things of that nature, it's done in a non-public setting.
This is, um, for contractors, so I think we did contractors, uh, we did one in non-public and we did one in public, so, what's your pleasure?
Well, are we, well, I think we did one in public because we wanted to put the information out there, correct? Like, we were, you were-
Mm-hmm.
-going over what it would look like, the concerns, uh, kind of the situation, the dilemma that we were in.
Mm-hmm.
I think if we are talking names-
Right, so this does not have any names tied to it, and I think that that was part of the reason-
Okay.
-that we did, uh, non-public for one, because there were some names-
Right.
-that were, um, specific people that were tied to that. So, um, but a- again, uh, I am happy to stop talking-
Well, there was-
-and wait for non-public.
There was either a board vote or a board consensus at the last meeting-
Consensus.
-consensus-
Yes.
-to not move forward with the- Consensus to not move forward with the...
Correct.
With anything yet.
With hiring.
Because Mrs. Abbott had just made a presentation.
With valid concerns?
I thought, what?
I said with valid concerns.
Yeah. With that, I thought, or figured, members of admin and maybe them would get together and sort of discuss some of the ideas she had. I've since entered into some conversations with Mr. Shagnon about the teachers' union concerns. And we haven't even had a chance to talk yet.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm not trying to throw a monkey wrench into this, but if I'm, you know, it would, it would, I didn't, I didn't really, I saw the, first of all, this agenda is the result of me being sick. No, it really is. Some of this wouldn't even be on here. I was sick and everyone was sending me stuff, put this on the agenda, and I just let you do it because I could barely sit up. So, it's just, they're usually not this long. I just am concerned that, you know, have there been any conversations with the para-professional unions since the last meeting? I'm going to guess no. And there certainly hasn't been with the teachers' association. So I'm, I'm personally a little concerned. I, again, as I said earlier, I, I get the need. But I also want to honor the requests to talk because I haven't listened to them yet.
I think that makes complete sense. And so I wonder if, if what might make sense would be to review what we received
Okay.
in terms of the information from Mackenzie.
It'll answer some of those questions that came about from the last meeting.
About...
You guys will have that for discussion.
Yeah, I guess that's where I thought we were going. I got...
I didn't know.
I thought that this, your presentation, which was very detailed and very good, just from me.
Again, on a normal week, I would have gone through all of these items with Mr. Doyle and said, what is it? What are you planning to do? I did not do that. I was ill and they just, they'd throw it on.
Yeah, I guess I was under the impression that we weren't, we just, we weren't going to hire any contracted services until we had an opportunity to answer some of those questions for her to gather her stuff. So I was actually expecting something like this.
Correct.
Because I'm also, it's, it's August 19th. We have legal obligations to fill before the start of school.
Were you expecting us to vote on these tonight as, as potential hires?
I was definitely going to ask you to approve something. And not that I was expecting you to say, like, necessarily yes or no, you know, for tonight. But, you know, I'm always going to ask for the kids.
And so I'll apologize, I won't apologize for being sick because I didn't have control over it. But I should have probably passed it along to the vice chair and said, dissect through this stuff and see what, what we're putting on the agenda. And I didn't do that. I should have. So, but I personally, I'm willing to, yeah, I'm willing to sort of look at this stuff, but I, I can't vote tonight. But if the rest of the board can, then that's fine.
And that's fine. I understand that sometimes it, there are additional steps and processes and, you know, never hurts to shoot for the stars. So, anyhow. Here, the cover page that you have is an analysis of the proposals from three contracting companies. So we have Emerges, that's how you pronounce it, which is took over from Maxim. Okay? ProCare, who we worked with last year, and Boothby, you may or may not be familiar with Boothby's. And then the services that they offer in the special ed realm, school counselor proposal, some notes that we took and how we rated them as like number one, like this, this would be the one that we would recommend, two, three. That having been said, I thought, you know, also with some of these contracting things we've done, we found out that they didn't actually have people attached to the contracts. So I said, hey, you know, let me just reach out and say, hey, within the next week, I want to interview your people. I'm not saying you're getting the contract. I just want to make sure you have real people there. I want to be able to, you know, speak fully to the board. And the only one that was able, well, I only reached out to the first two. And Emerges was the only one that was able to set up any interviews and with some para-professionals who, by the way, were, seemed like they would be well, well-qualified to support the students and the needs that the students have at Valley View. Nobody was able to produce a school counselor. In fairness, I did not reach out to Boothby. I'm happy to do that, to see if they do actually have a school counselor, depending upon, you know, how the board would like us to do this. And then you have the actual RFPs enclosed here for your review to see, you know, where the information came from. But the summary sheet has it all. I'm happy to send this to Peter Miller and Lisa and Brian, as well as part of the previous request. One of the questions was, I think, about how does the rate that the contracting company get broken down? Like, what goes to the staff? How does that work? And how does that compare with what we are able to do here in Farmington? And I, I know Mackenzie's doing double duty because we're still, we're working on the payroll person, so I didn't know. Did you have a chance?
I think I have at least some information that I can generate, some conversation for you guys going through this stuff. They put right on here that, a good, I mean, a good thing is, is that we did get the breakdown from the company. I don't know if they would have offered that unless they thought we were semi-seriously. I mean, accepting the bid is, I think, okay. The bid presentation. But, you know, it breaks out, so they're paying para-twos $42 an hour at face value. So, I mean, that's just a cost for them to pay the para. That actually breaks out to, 62% of that goes to salary, 22% of that goes to benefits. And then there's a mysterious 16% that goes to the company. So they're paying their paras about $26 an hour. And of the remaining $42, only $9.24 goes towards a benefit. By comparison, our district invests upwards of 35% to 40% into benefits. That's a much larger percentage of what we offer to a para. So that rate per hour doesn't tell a full story because it's subsidizing, subsidizing their benefits. That's the part that they won't, you know, reveal to us here. And then they're taking 16%, so about every $7 goes to profit. We don't have to do that. You know, it all goes into the para taxes and medical care, of which the paras have negotiated for higher pay and medical benefits this year on par with our teachers. So it is a substantial investment that we make in our own employees. The total cost per hour for us breaks out to somewhere between $33 per hour on the high end. It goes down from there. And that's compared to the $42 an hour for their para cost.
Thank you.
But 42 minus really $7 because we're not profiting from paras.
So, there's the profit. They're charging for the profit.
Right. We're looking at 35. You know what I mean?
Roughly, it's, it's a very comparable, but what's not, I mean, what's not comparable is how much we put into the employees' benefits.
Yes.
Well, and I think, I'm not sure if we're able to really quantify the, some other benefits that we offer our paraeducators here. So, you know, there is the money toward professional development and the actual professional development days. So there's both of those things. Retirement system, I'm not going to remember what paras have.
Hours to qualify for enhanced retirement. But they, they most likely have some sort of plan that they, like a 401K, they have to contribute to.
They also get longevity.
Right.
We offer longevity. Just the perks of being, you know, employed by us is a little bit better because you're not due to the whims of the needs of the business, just more or less the school district. So the changes are not as frequent as you may be plucked from a district and thrown into a new, whole new job, really. Where you have to learn every name and face again. So there is a challenge to that. Of course, that wouldn't account for any traveling you have to do if it's not outside the realm of your local area. Go ahead, Colleen.
Are you done?
No, I won't overtalk. Go ahead.
So we wanted to make sure that we brought all of the information to you. And I'm definitely going to ask you tonight. I have to ask, right? I have to ask. So my request is respectfully, that I am requesting that the board approve entering into a contract with Emerges to fill a critical role for special education services. That is one request. My separate request is that, is around school counselor. But I'm not really sure what direction the board wants me to go. Do you want me to see if Boothby has one? Do you want me to interview one from Emerges? So let's just stick with the special ed services for, for the specific request.
I would come back to the fact that you really wanted to put hiring on hold until you've had a chance to talk with all your constituents who've got questions around this.
Yeah. But I want, yes, and I, and I'll entertain conversations with the teachers' union as they've asked. But as far as like Lisa's, some of the concerns that she brought, I feel like that's a conversation to have with all you folks. Like, she's, she, her recommendations and ideas were around, how do we advertise? How do we, you know, those types of things. I don't necessarily think that needs to be a board-level thing.
Well, and she had some ideas similar to Beth too about hiring, like if, like hiring and like little, like sign-on bonuses. And if you've been here and you're a first-year teacher and you kind of like recruit someone, so that's a lot of those.
And that would have to come to us for approval, obviously.
Right.
But, and then maybe the teachers' union could sit down as well.
I don't, don't know if Lisa is aware of some of the, although she must have seen it on Facebook because we did, we did do some additional advertising, Ed Pritika making up flyers. I would like, put it out, put it out again, put it out again, Pritika. You know, of trying to, you know, get out on social media. I, I think it is a wonderful idea to sit down with her. I don't know. I want to be fair to not only Lisa, but, you know, all of our paraeducators in the union and hear what they have to say and try, and try the things that they're saying.
I'm just afraid that trying those things, I think, I think having conversations with these people and working together is important. Absolutely. We need it for morale, communication, transparency. It's what we've been, all of us here in this room and others. It's what's been most important. And I absolutely agree with Joel. That needs to happen. But in the meantime, we have to legally hire special education staffing where we are going to have major, major legal ramifications. And like you said, it's temporary with that 30-day clause until hopefully we can. So if this can get us where we need to, to start, this is my opinion, this is just my opinion personally, to start, meet with these individuals, meet with these folks, and come up with some other ideas. And if we can hire someone that they know, I'm not sure why they haven't applied yet. But if they know someone, then great, come on board. We will welcome you with open arms, absolutely. But having worked in special education...
Can the board meet next Monday or later in the week?
It depends. I can, I have events every day this week, so I can meet in the morning or afternoon.
Well, this week or next? You're talking the current week?
I'm saying a later in the week, like Thursday meeting, or could we meet next Monday? We're going to have the following Monday off because it's Labor Day. The agenda is incorrect.
I, I can do whatever. Not Thursday night, night, but Thursday I can.
All right. Then let me just put it this way. Can we, can we meet on August 26th?
Monday.
It's a week from tonight.
I can.
Yes.
It will be a short agenda. This will be one item. And we're going to table one, at least one other.
I personally don't want to wait until next Monday for this, for this. I think it is a, I think it is in dire need and it is almost like a crisis situation personally.
I mean, if we have...
Because I just, I'm afraid that if we wait until Monday, then we're talking, you know, things not going up till Tuesday or Wednesday, then we're talking the end of the week, and then people are leaving for vacations, and then school starts.
Right.
And the contracting company will, will place people elsewhere.
Elsewhere, right. That's all, personally.
So then make, make, make a, make a recommendation and make a, make a motion.
Can you do Thursday? This coming?
Not during the day.
Well, no, but, oh, what, you can't get to anywhere by until 5:00, right?
4:30.
Okay. And if I, if we did, or even Wednesday, I don't know, what's, what's... Wednesday, I'm... I can do past 4:00, 5 o'clock. I just can't on Thursday. Or Thursday.
I just have a clarifying, can I ask?
I was looking for time, I was looking for time to talk to the teachers' union. That's all I'm looking for, is to honor what I told them I'd do.
And I think that's fair.
And I think that this information...
You can make a recommendation, you can make a motion, and we can vote tonight. I will abstain or vote no based on the fact that I already made a promise to talk, so.
I guess my question is, if, if we approve, if we make the motion tonight to have Colleen move forward with talking to the contracting company and start looking for individuals...
To paraeducators.
To paraeducators. Those individuals still have to come before the board, correct? Like, what, like as a nomination?
That is a good question about what the process would be. If that is what you're telling me, then I, then I would bring...
I'm asking. I don't know. This is the first time I've ever done this.
I would, I would assume it would come, I would assume you would whittle down the pool just like you would, regardless of where they come from. And then we make a nomination for...
Our original vote was to allow her to go forward and look.
And gather.
And then last week, it was a consensus to hold. So we can lift that. When we lift that, she will have the ability to hire a contracted service.
That it wouldn't come to us as a nomination?
Once you get the, it, I believe that what other schools do is once there's the approval for contracting, then you, you just talk to the contractor or get the position filled.
The problem is though, there has to be a vote to spend the money.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying, I think, I think we go forward with interviewing these folks. And then, heck, if anybody out there, you know, wants to throw their hat in the ring.
I have very strong feelings on this, so whatever. I'll probably be at the town square tomorrow morning. But I'm going to actually make a motion to lift the consensus that we discussed last week. I think there was some miscommunication and maybe we all had a different idea of what that hold meant. And make a motion to allow Colleen to start interviewing for the two paras that are considered emergent that could cause significant legal ramifications, as well as the other ramifications she listed tonight. In the meantime, though, I just want to make sure that we are listening to the teachers' union and to the paras and that we are continuing to still do our due diligence to hire our own, our own employees.
Yes, absolutely.
Motion by Mrs. Doyle.
I'll second for discussion.
Second by Mrs. Lozey. Discussion.
In, in doing so, your interviews with these folks. I mean, I, I guess I'd like to see it come back, well, not to hi, not to interview, not, you know, but we're going to need to make a motion to hire, I mean, to spend this money unless that's part, or is that going to be a second part of the motion?
If I may, I'm asking for two paraeducators from Emerges. So the cost is there in the contract. So I'm asking for that to be approved. Maybe that would be the easiest route. So I'll make that, so yes, I'll go ahead and make that part of my motion then. Thank you.
Joel?
Yes.
So you told the teachers' union that you, we were holding off and that you, we were going to have a conversation, you were going to have a conversation.
The question, the question was, the question was, can we sit down with you to discuss ideas we have? And it was related to specific, basically special ed teachers and guidance counselors because they fall under, those positions fall under the teachers' union master agreement collective bargaining. And so I said, yeah. And then he got back to me today and said, okay, you know, and he, he put some notes of a few things, questions they had and he, about when we could get together to talk. So I just have to reach out and say, let's sit down. I, I would assume, I was, I didn't want to call a meeting for it, I figured it would be two of us to, to, so they could feel heard.
And I think that's important. Again, I don't want anyone to think that that's not important and that's not where I'm coming from. Again, it is important for morale, it is important for that transparency and communication. I did not know that information, I think we are in dire need. The teachers' union, special education teacher, case management, guidance, that's not even something that Colleen's.
I'm asking that.
Considering, asking an emergent for right now, tonight.
Right.
Although there are still openings, so if anyone has wonderful ideas out there, all of these ideas, before you meet with us, please share them with your friends and local educators who may want to join us. So this is just regarding.
The, the.
The two paras.
Right, the two paras. And I, I understand your feelings about legally we need these, which obviously we do. My question with that is with the numbers you provided today, like the 20 out of 23, seven out of 10, six out of, well, I guess we can take the high school out of the mix, but. As those numbers stand today, are we, and I, it may be this is hard to answer because school hasn't started and these kids aren't here. Are we legally okay with those numbers as we start the school year?
I think that's a very good question about whether we will be able to schedule the paraeducators well enough to provide the shared paraeducator support that is, that are in the students' IEPs. I believe that we will be able to do that. But where the kids land, where the paras land and, and the schedules that are being developed all lead up to that answer and not all of that is in place.
Right.
Um, the other thing that is always something that can change is who goes to school here because.
Right, and I guess that's, you know.
They come and they go.
Yeah, and that's why I think my question was a little open ended, but I, I guess where I was going with it.
I, I think, I think we're good.
Is that, okay, okay, so that's kind of where I, I see the need to get on it, get the ball rolling and get these people, these two paras in.
One back, yeah.
But I, I don't want to rush. I know it needs to be rushed. I would hate to see it rushed before we've had all the conversations, before we pull the trigger on anything. If it's a week later, say, give us time to speak with the teachers' union and the paras' union, have those confer-, especially the paras' uni-, the union where they are parapositions. I guess I would be okay in starting the school year with the intention of having, well, we're obviously gonna have the conversations prior to the school year, but if we're starting with what we know now, if we're legally okay, I'm okay waiting so that para might not start until the second week of school instead of the first week of school.
I think she's, correct me if I'm wrong, she's saying if we can hire these two paras, then we'll legally kind of be okay. But if, if we do not, then the numbers will not be met.
Oh, that's not what I, oh, I did not, I didn't take it that way.
Because you're saying there's still three, four, what, three, six, so there's still six paras. But what she's saying is that legally we need two in order to be legally sound, correct?
Thank you, thank you very much, yes, I'm sorry, misunderstood you.
Okay, okay, yeah.
There's, there's two paras in the grave need category and one counselor in the grave need category.
Right, I got that, but I guess I, my question was if we didn't hi-, I, we're obviously in some way, shape or form going to hire two paras. But if, if it didn't happen until the second week of school instead of the first day of school.
That will be problematic.
Okay, that's, that's where I was going.
Were we in grave need prior to Ju-, July 1?
Prior to July 1?
Well, did we lose enough, did we lose paras over the summer?
Uh, well, you know, we had someone retire and I don't think that many moved on, yeah.
This is something you've brought up though, like.
The incoming kindergarteners.
Yeah. Like I found out about one of them the end of July.
And we would be.
And that happens.
And we would be bringing these two grave parapositions on, on like a 30-day trial basis, I guess. Is that where we're, is that the intention, right?
What I was trying to communicate about the 30 days is that once you contract with the company, usually a company's contract has a like 30-day out clause basically, so you, once we are able to hire our own folks, then we can say, thank you, Emerges, you did great, and this is your 30-day notice. In 30 days, your person's gonna leave because we're bringing our, you know, we got an employee.
Okay.
And Emerges has that in their contract?
Mm-hmm. Yep. I guess that's all my questions, I don't know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, boy.
I know.
I haven't voted.
It's a reluctant aye, I'll, I'll say it that way, but.
How many incoming kindergarteners are gonna require special ed services that we know so far? What's the number, do we know?
I'd say, I'll put it in about aye.
Aye. All right, get ready for the backlash.
But again, I want folks at home and the community to understand that this is a dire need right now. This is a temporary solution that the entire state and people across the nation are using. This is not a forever, we're not saying we're going to contracted services, we're listening to what individuals have to say. I mean, this is, this is two parapositions, right? Like, we're listening to what people have to say, it is temporary until we can.
Manage it ourselves.
Manage it ourselves and have someone come on and there's a 30-day out clause. So just please, please try to understand that. And again, this is for our children, this is for our students, this is what we're here for, to support our students.
I'm gonna make a motion to table business roundtable proposal.
Please do.
Before I leave the chair.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought that's all.
Before I leave the chair. As far, nobody had a school counselor for me, but I didn't ask Boothby, so I just want you to know, do you want me to find out, hey, Emerges, where is your, and then ask Boothby, yeah?
Yes.
And just bring that information, okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much for giving me so much time.
And we're going to discuss having another meeting soon.
And please invite me, I would really like to be part of doing this.
I mean, I'll ask the board right now, can we meet next Monday?
Yes. Yes.
I can do it too.
Is the board interested in sticking with the five o'clock's schedule for next Monday? For now, we'll discuss that in the future. Mr. Henry noted tonight that he has availability on Mondays now. So, all right, we'll, we'll add that to our, our, because there'll part, there may be other nominations too. We don't want to sit on those, you know?
Yep.
Uh, and we'll. Couple things.
Thank you.
I think also Jim, we'll leave Farmington High School handbook on the table tonight for the next agenda.
Okay.
Reason being, whether they're small or not, it's, we just can't.
No.
Vote on a document of that importance when we get changes that night.
I wouldn't expect it.
It's just not really right.
But I really like the truancy.
Yeah.
I'll have an updated edition before the week is out.
I do have, I was gonna have a suggestion for that tonight, I'll, I can just email it and then we can talk about it on Monday.
Okay. Now, the next two things have some timetable just because of the availability of contractors. Esser-funded athletic projects, Matt?
Uh, there's two, well, there's technically three that were given to me. Uh, but the wish list is for bleachers, score table, and then it's a redo of the fitness room to enable our athletes to have a better, more usable location. Uh, so for those who don't know, it's essentially in a closet right now and it's kind of narrow. It's not a, I would even say like a really healthy ergonomic environment for an athlete to, to be strength training in, especially for, you know, basketball, football and any other upcoming programs. Uh, you know, there's, there's a certain level that we'd like to provide the students, as far as I understand it. So what was brought to me first, we'll go through the rate, the weight room, was, was a rate room redo and there's two components to this, so it's outfitting the room with equipment and it's ensuring that the room has the proper flooring to support the equipment. And part of that process is quite expensive. So once we realized it was gonna exceed $10,000 in value, we had the athletic director seek a few more quotes. We got three total. We haven't received the last dollar amount for the last quote, but the athletic director has a preference in mind, although we did receive a layout, so there was some structure to it. But the three bidders on this one were Total Fitness, who's proposing an equipment overhaul, and this is, this summary is actually in your board folder. Is perform, proposing a weight room overhaul here with $19,000 worth of equipment and a rounding and $16,000 worth of flooring. The next one is Precision Fitness Equipment. Uh, they're the ones that submitted a layout, working on a quote. Uh, I'm not sure if that's been received, it wasn't forwarded to me yet, but either way. Uh, the next one is Gronk Fitness. And that's two options from Gronk Fitness, so there's about $28,000 worth of equipment with the Gronk labeled trainers' equipment. And then they have a higher-tier Kaiser equipment suite that's about $36,000 and flooring either way you go is $8,000 on that one. MGB, we did hear from a fourth, this one again was just a layout and then kind of no timetable on the clothes, so it's even less involved than the PFP. The athletic director wrote up the summary here, just highlighting Gronk Fitness's professionalism, the ability to customize the equipment for Farmington, just the air of preparedness, the lower value of the flooring, so you're getting more equipment versus more flooring price there. And I told them I'd have to look into it originally and then I, I think I came to a conclusion that like we, for instance, we put the SROs into the budget this year, so we raised the money for that through taxation. And so instead of paying for July, July, August and September through our budget, we would just keep that going through Esser for now where they have them through, through the end of September. Uh, and that would free out roughly the same amount of money that we need to do this, about $40,000, so. The total cost for Total Fitness was $35,055. The total cost for Gronk was $36,200. Uh, if we're going with the Gronk trainer, not the more expensive trainer, or else that would jump about $10,000 or so, maybe $8,000. So roughly $44,000 if you went with the Kaisers. And that's, again, a complete outfit overhaul of the room in question, which is a big oversized classroom. It's very suitable for, for a weight room, it's right across from the gym. And it would be all Farmington labeled equipment, which is great, it would be black and orange. And, you know, it's gonna have a tremendous impact on the athletes. Uh, I know, because I have two athletes at home that go and work at a weight room every day and that the school offers and that's one major thing that they, that they love and prepares them for the sport that they're about to engage in. So it's, it's definitely money well spent and it's not something that reoccurs too often. So if we wanted to start putting away for the next round of equipment, we can consider that with future budgets as well. But that's the way it is right now. So if the board is comfortable voting on such a measure, I am happy to entertain getting that done.
So basically it's an indirect use of Esser.
It is. It is.
Which has been suggested to us.
Yes, by.
By.
Our friends at the state saying, well, we're a little late on some of the projects, but if you have allowable costs that you have used Esser for, you can put the money into that and then take the money in your budget that you still have and pay for the project.
And this weight room also is gonna be used for, like I would assume, by Mr. Mutcher in PE classes.
Yes.
Mr. Moser spoke to me about this briefly, he had seen a local school and I, I don't want to quote which one it is because I can't remember, who used Gronk for their reboot of their weight rooms in athletic, some of their athletic facilities and he said it was really amazing what they did. If folks have noticed, when they come to events at Farmington High School, often when you enter through the athletic hallway, you see weight benches in the hall, you see weights stacked in the hall, which I always say, get them out of here. The reason they're in there is because you can't possibly put a gym class in the current weight room. You cannot put a basketball team in the current weight room. You cannot, certainly cannot put a football team.
No, no.
And our football numbers have grown, have grown very nicely with our new coaches, done so much promotion for the sport that I think it's a, I think it's a great use of money. I really do. So.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the Gronk Fitness proposal at the $36,200 mark that they indicated through, paid for indirectly by Esser, I, I don't, I don't know, yeah.
By offsetting the cost of monies that we had budgeted for.
Do we need plus flooring, plus flooring?
Oh, I thought.
That is with the flooring.
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say that is, that is, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So the flooring was just listed separate?
Yes, I combined them both for the two totals, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, just wanted to be sure. Sorry, Stacey.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
So motion by Mrs. Lozey, second by Mrs. Parker, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the next one, which I, at first I, I, I didn't have the capacity to really look into it, but reading through the materials, I think is kind of a really neat opportunity for this district.
Is this one in the folder?
This one is not in the folder, it's, it's pretty comprehensive, there's a bunch of stuff. I'll upload it after so you guys can see it. I don't think we can make a decision on it right away because it's a funding thing, but once I find an offset for this, I think, you know, I can bring it back around. But what it is, is it's an interactive score table, which at face value, you know, is, just sounds like a score table. But it's interactive because it has televisions mounted to the front of it and they're heavy-duty screens. Uh, so even if you threw a ball or a hammer at it, it wouldn't break it. Uh, so they're built for gym environments, game environments, young children, they have a picture in one of, in one of these where the kids are all standing on the table, they have five children. Uh, so they're not collapsible, it's not cheap material. And the screens are meant to project advertisements for local businesses. And they give you a host of tools to procure those advertisements, what those packages look like for small schools, big schools, extra big schools. Uh, we fall into the smaller category based upon the number of students that they're, that they're using. But, you know, it can generate about $10,000 a year for us, which is substantial because the product itself is about $20,000 total. So if you can, if we can find a way to offset this, not unlike the weight room, then you'd be making money, you know, in the long term for the athletes, which is great for these programs and trying to put more money away to improve the programs and I think really accelerates what we're trying to do here as a district. And since coming to Farmington, I know that when it's like basketball time, like that's when things get going. Everyone shows up and, you know, they wanna, they wanna be in a place that's modernized. Uh, it doesn't mean that we have to tear down the gym and build a new gym, it just means outfitting our athletes and our administration for athletics with the right equipment to get the job done. And so this helps them generate money for their program in the future, it helps the athletes.
I just wanted to see more.
Yeah, it's, it's really cool stuff. And, you know, it, it helps the athletes, there's a quote there from a child that said, wow, the gym feels like a whole new gym. Uh, we didn't have to redo the gym, I thought we did. And he's standing in a 50-year-old gym complimenting it just how this, this device sticks out and, and is in there in the middle of the floor displaying their logo, displaying local business logos that businesses, they realize that businesses are contributing to the team. You know, so it does, it does a lot of good to bring the community together with our athletes here.
Well, and I'm wondering if we can even use it, like is this something that would be able to be used like for people who are making donations for like, you know, different things like the penny sale or even if we're having like a music night, like, you know what I mean?
So you can even give free spots to your local nonprofits, you know?
Yeah, so it doesn't even have to, I mean, yes, obviously sports, but I'm sure it could be used for many other.
Correct, and especially with your tournaments that you have. Correct. And especially with your tournaments that you have, you can really drum up some great revenue or some awesome opportunities to showcase things like that. And it integrates with the Huddle product that you also invested in. So you can put up replays of children, highlights. I mean, it's really cutting edge stuff. Um, and we have an oppor, unique opportunity to procure this through, um, an offset of that budget. So I definitely think it's possible. I don't know if you want to vote, maybe pending that, or if we need to get more quotes because it is above the ten thousand. It's kind of a unique product. I don't know how many people offer this, but, um, I think there's two, there's two elements here. We have to make sure that we meet the procurement, um, regulation and that I can offset part of the budget.
This is the only quote?
This is the only one we have, yeah, that was provided.
How did it come to us?
Uh, the athletic director.
Requested it.
Probably met the vendor at a conference or something.
Well, and where it integrates with Huddle.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Yep.
I mean, if it's a unique product, we can waive bid, um, sole source.
And it, and that wouldn't be against ESSER regulations because it's all, it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And after ten, it's, you have to follow your own procurement up to two hundred and fifty and then it's federal, you have to dip it type of thing.
Is the goal to try to use ESSER?
The goal was to offset ESSER money because I won't be able to justify that this came, you know, as about necessarily of the pandemic. But, I mean, we do have a lot of interventionists and people that we employ that did become about originally of the pandemic. And although they were voted back into the budget, um, you know, we can still take the salary that in September and add up a few of them to kind of pay, offset and pay for that was my.
And that won't impact them being in the budget for next year?
No.
They're already in this year.
Exactly. So the money is.
Just wanted to make sure for those who are confused at home.
Yes, great question.
I just wanted to make sure.
I, I don't want it to seem like we're trying to do anything that's unsavory, but it, it's, it's not like that. It's just.
And I know you had said that, but I just wanted to make sure.
How, how does that go in regards to the taxpayers, we're spending money that we, on something that we didn't tell them we were spending it on?
So, we did, we did put the appropriation for ESSER on the ballot and they approved the appropriation for ESSER on the ballot as well as our budget. So as long as we're not going outside the realm of things that were approved to do, it's okay. I mean, no one said spend the ESSER money dollar for dollar on this one activity or item or et cetera. And as we know, it's a bottom line budget. So our organization of account numbers and things like that doesn't necessarily stipulate that we'll either go over or under the bottom line. Just.
Thank you.
I have a list too that I received today from, uh, a suggestion list from a community member on some possible ESSER items, how we can fi, you know.
Yes, and I'm open to anything.
Right, I haven't gone through the whole list yet. Um, I've just had a really busy day, but, um, I'll obviously, you know.
Forward it on over. Yeah, that's fine. I, I think right now we're budgeted three point seven out of three point eight, but there's some monies and activities that we didn't spend that need to come back out of that, those activities. So until I'm done reconciling that, that final number, uh, and I'm going to meet with Kim about some more learning loss stuff too. Um, you know, I'll have a pretty good idea of where we land. So that's all happening this, later this week.
Is this something the board wants to take a look at tonight or maybe next Monday?
Oh, yeah, I don't, I'm not ready to look at, I mean, tonight, but if you want to upload that stuff.
Yeah, I can upload it, drop it in.
Yes, please.
I think that'd be great.
Thank you. Was that it for athletics?
The last one was the bleachers. Uh, that's two hundred and fifty thousand upfront. So, I mean, that's like a massive bid process and I don't know if I can turn it around, just being honest at the time.
Bleachers for where?
High school or?
The high school, I do believe.
Henry Wilson.
I, I think they could both use them, but I think it was probably with the, the athletics.
Henry Wilson's are newer.
Yeah.
Then it's the high school, yeah. Um, but, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's an ESSER, I don't know if I can make it happen.
Hmm, that's a lot of money. More than, like, a lot, not that I really.
Probably offset, to be honest.
Not that I have an idea of how much bleachers cost, but I guess I, I just didn't think they'd be.
I don't, our, let's put, where our bleachers and all are safe or anything, but man.
They're not comfortable.
They're a pain to just move, right? Yeah, how are they? Did they pass inspection? Okay.
Yes, the answer is yes. Yep.
The answer is yes.
Well, let's start buying some comfy padding and chairs to.
Yeah, maybe that's a, that's a nice fundraiser.
There you go, Kevin.
All right.
I, I still have them from like the eighty, the cushions from the eighties, so mine need to be replaced.
So does Bill Vashon. He brings it every game. God bless him.
I think we'll give him one a break.
Um, but he also has a really nice chair that his granddaughter got him for his birthday. Uh, Henry Wilson Roof Repair.
So I'll invite Larry for part of this if he would like to join us, but I won't make.
With all of our recent rain.
Joel, A and B on that list too, in number seven. You didn't table those to do? A and B.
So Larry, I did get your quote today and I dropped it in there for him.
I was like, I think he skipped it, but I'm going to wait and see what he does.
No, it was just a flat ten grand. Oh, that was. So, okay, so I'll let you talk to that. Uh, just background for the board. Uh, J, one of Jim's priorities has been making sure these, these kids and, um, staff are not subject to a rainforest hallway. But, um, we're trying our best and it's, it's developing to, to maybe, um, a bigger problem. I, I don't think that the past work is gone so smoothly. I won't blast the company on air or anything like that. So I think there's more.
Well, I, I don't.
By the same token, I think Larry has, um, a solution that's viable.
I don't mind blasting the company that did it. Because I've had, uh, Melanson Roofing in to do a quote. They did a comprehensive quote. They're, they're the ones that basically sent in the total amount. He took pictures of everything that they would do, discussed everything they would do. I don't know if you got a copy of it or not, but. And then, uh, New England Roofing, so tried to stay with some commercial local companies and, uh, Jay Conn's and son. Uh, I haven't heard back from Conn's and son. Basically, all three of them said that, uh, when we had Progressive Roofing do the last round of fixes at the Henry Wilson School, part of that was to replace all the skylights that were bad. The consensus for all three is they screwed up with the skylights. Some of them aren't the right size. They've got gaps in them. That's why we have water running down in the hallways in the fifth grade hallway a lot of times. That. Progressive Company will not take our phone calls anymore. We went through them for, I've had them back four times for the things. Uh, the last time they told me I'd call Firestone Warranty because that's who has the warranty now on the roof. The skylights aren't covered under that. That was a separate thing that was done during that. But, uh, yeah, basically that's, that's the major problem in certain areas. Um.
Is that company still in business?
Yes, I believe so.
Progressive?
Progressive.
Um, can somebody reach out to?
We've traveled, oh, yes, absolutely.
Let's reach out to Eric and see what he suggests.
Uh, yeah, just a background on that. When that was, when that project was done, the former board, if you remember, appointed to pay somebody to oversee the project. So, um, they were signed off on. I didn't go up and look at any of it. But anyways, uh, Melanson has, like I said, they, he took pictures. Uh, they're willing to come in, replace places where he can see holes already flashing around the, reflash around the skylights. Uh, have a three-man crew in for, he figured three days or so to go over the whole roof, check for holes, repair the flashing around some of the AM makeup units because there's holes there where it's peeled away. So I'm starting, um, general maintenance of the roof. New England Roofing, like I said, he put in a bid, but he's, uh, a quote, I should say. But he quoted replacing plywood and, uh, having stuff put over the attic garage and stuff like. It doesn't really apply to the steel roofing we have. It doesn't seem like. And like I said, I haven't heard back from Conn's yet. Uh, he told me that it, it would probably lead into more problems where they started digging in. That's why, like I said, to me, Melanson was the best option. He spent time up there. Have a whole array of pictures where he, like I said, he had a set of keys. He showed where some of the holes, some of the flashing was. Uh, they're also willing to, part of the quote was to reseal some of the brick masonry work by the gym that there's cracks through there where they replaced the window, took the windows out before. So it was a pretty comprehensive thing, but anyway, his, their bid was, or their quote was for eleven thousand eight hundred fifty dollars estimated. And he also had given me actually if, uh, we could have done something sooner, he would have had a crew in this week. He told me that they'll, they could get a crew in pretty quick to take care of it if they wanted to.
When the Buildings and Grounds Committee walked through Henry Wilson last year, we, that was obviously very obvious that there were issues that every skylight.
Yes.
History, over the course of the year, we've been chasing this issue. Um, and it got to the point where, um, some representative that Larry can speak to, uh, did, um, attempt repairs. And, uh, we, we thought that we were all well and good. Um, toward the latter part of July, when we had a day or so where of deluge, of deluge, I said, "Well, let's see if those attempts turned into reality." And the reality was if we were to be in school under the conditions as they were being presented on that day, um, it would have not been good to put it mildly. So with all, and I, with the idea that we do need to pursue the legal side of this, um, the, the reasoning for pursuing, um, companies such as Melanson is we don't want to go into the school year with these conditions as they are. And I, I know you're in agreement with that, but I just wanted you to know that this wasn't some, um, desire to chase down quotes just on a whim. And I know that you're thinking that, but it's for the benefit of the folks at home that we were acting in good faith, trying to pursue through Progressive to start, um, trying to get this resolved. And it, it ended up with why we're here tonight talking about this.
Do we have eleven eight fifty in a repair line or?
Yeah, yeah, we did check it out and we're willing to get it done and make sure that, yeah.
How's the board feeling on getting this going?
Get it going.
Someone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to, uh, work, go under contract with Melanson Roofing with, uh, the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars as their, as was presented for Henry Wilson.
As soon as they can get here.
Okay.
Second, second by Mrs. Parker, motion by Mrs. Lozey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
But I really, I really, I am serious about following up with Eric about what, what our, um, recourse could potentially be.
Because we've been chasing this one for a while.
Thank you, Larry.
Good to see you back.
Yeah, um.
Back up today.
As Jessica pointed out to me, thank you, Mrs. Parker, we, I don't know how I jumped right to the R. Oh, you know why? Because we were on RFP and then I looked at the other RFP. Oh, boy. Retiring a Farmington school bus. After many years of service, we're going to issue it a plaque or what?
Unfortunately, no retirement checking the bus.
Gil, do you want to come over to the mic? Is this one you may have already alerted us to?
Number eight.
Yeah.
There's no hope.
It's a flatliner.
Yeah.
Thanks for being straight about it, Gil.
Yeah, it's cheap. Um, brakes are gone. The only thing that's working right now is the engine. The hood falls off. So, we don't need a hood, that's fine.
Can you just bang it?
I tried to bang, the super glue doesn't even hold it.
I think this was expected though, right?
Oh, yes, most definitely.
What do we usually do when we retire a bus? We put it out?
Uh, put it out for bid.
I'm sorry?
Put it out for bid. You know, somebody bid on it for scrap metal. Uh, I also have van eleven, has two hundred and fifty-three, uh, thousand miles on it. The, um, rocker panels are gone. I called around. I'm looking at five thousand just to get the rocker panels put on. So, and with the amount of mileage on it, not worth it. So it's two vehicles that can put up for a bid or, or sale.
How old's the van?
The van is a thirteen, twenty, twenty thirteen.
Is that B? We're talking about A and B now together?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it?
Is that the approval?
Uh, van eleven, that's the one, that's one of the ones that, uh, was purchased a while back. Uh, and, but it's, and I believe it purchased used. I'm not sure.
Maybe just the title on it.
Thirteen was the one that had the transmission.
Okay, and then you do need repairs on another van?
Uh, just that one. That's it.
Oh, okay, so they're both.
Yeah, the only other, uh, repairs being done right now, well, not, they're on hold until you guys give me the go-ahead, is the, um, fourteen, which is the, uh, wheelchair bus, handicap. Now, they gave me a quote and, uh, started off at, uh, five, now it's gone to seven because it needs mirrors. Uh, one of the, the step for the, uh, driver fell off due to rust. Put another one on. They have mirrors that have to be replaced, uh, number of little things that just build up even, and then brakes, brake lines, so forth. And looking at a wheelchair or, or handicap bus that we purch, if we purchase a new one, you're looking at ninety-seven. You know, thousand for a brand new one. And that one, the one that we have, only a CDL driver can. Person has to have a CDL. The ones I looked at were that anyone could drive, any of my drivers could drive. But again, you're looking at, you're weighing the cost.
Right. So tonight, we're looking at retiring a van and a bus.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got on here approval for repairs on school van and that's van fourteen.
Van thirteen was already, it's already been fixed and red.
That one we approved?
Right.
That one you approved.
What, are we looking to vote on another approval for van?
For the, the fourteen, the handicap.
Okay. And that cost was what?
About seven. I can get you, um, real close monies on that. Like I said, that it's been sitting so, for so long, the mirrors, everything else was, and five dollars for the little sticker for handicap.
And that money comes out of just.
He has his repair line, but that'll probably put a nice little dent in it. Um. I was going to say, we could probably do another public hearing for that because we had about a hundred and fifteen in there, I think. We had over a hundred and we only spent ninety-three for the, the other bus. So that's kind of where I was going because the idea is that we'll put a bunch of money in there to refill it. So it kind of seems like the best option if we're.
Well, you, you say it's going to put a dent in, in repair, but that means it's not going to drain it dry, is it?
Uh, let's just see where we're at real quick.
We can do a public hearing later if something else comes up.
Yeah, because you're, the van, the thirteen is sixty-one. So.
I mean, I guess it, it's really six, half dozen in the other.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, I think he's fine to, to do it right now. And then if something else pops up and he draws a point, we'll, we'll handle it then, yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, that's fine.
I don't think we have to make a motion.
No, not, it's under ten.
No, that's, sorry.
It's under ten. I think, just bringing it to you for consideration.
And then you can put out the, the, it is demolition derby season, so somebody might be looking for a bus, a van?
Yes, not my husband.
So put it out there.
Got a couple of them probably be used for that.
Right.
Your, your buses, as I looked at them, they're, they're reaching their peak. I researched in buses, school buses, ten years.
Yeah.
And they're starting to reach their peak.
All right, well, we do warrant articles next year.
We'll give them a bond farewell then.
Throw a party for it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Gil.
You're welcome.
I feel bad. There was a lady sitting here for so long, and I should have recognized that.
She could be involved.
Did, do you know if she wanted to speak to the board? Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if she laughed, or?
I'm pretty sure she laughed.
She left. Her daughter started to get.
Okay, yeah, and I should have recognized that. Public participation?
I do.
Oh, go ahead.
Thanks. So F, Farmington House of Pizza is holding their second annual school supply drive.
Oh, nice.
So we'll, they collect everything at Farmington House. We'll have a list. And then I, as a parent, not a school board member, organize and distribute it. So if anybody has school supplies that they want to donate, they also take money. If you don't want to go shopping, you can just drop off money, and we'll make sure that the schools have what they need. It was very successful last year, so we're hoping for the same this year. Thank you.
Okay. We have some manifests to sign. Schools, falls.
I can't find them.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for looking.
Thank you.
Fall sports are underway. Good luck to our fall athletic teams. And we made a decision that we will meet next week on August twenty-sixth at five o'clock to go over a few tabled items, and it'll be a very short agenda. At this point, I'll entertain a, thank you to those of you who joined us from home and folks that showed up tonight. I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public session one to RSA ninety-one A three, colon three, two, A, B, and C for nominations and resignations. So moved by Mrs. Doyle, second by Mrs. Lozay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, folks. We'll see you next week.